I'd like to call to order the Charter Township of Oxford Planning Commission Regular Meeting for Thursday, July 11th, 2024. If we could start by standing and may we start to apply.
The divisions is to apply of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we note the roll?
Noted. There is a quorum. Mr. Berger is excused.
Moving on to number four, approval of tonight's agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. We approve tonight's agenda, July 11th, 2024.
I have a motion. I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Number five, conflict of interest, exportee contact. Anybody have anything they need to share tonight?
Nope.
Seeing none, we will move on to number six, approval of the minutes, Planning Commission Regular Meeting, oh six thirteen twenty twenty-four.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Planning Commission Regular Meeting Minutes, oh six thirteen twenty twenty-four.
I have a motion. I have a second. Any discussion? Any discrepancies? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, public comment on item not scheduled for public hearing or on tonight's Seeing none, I will move on to number eight, Commissioners' comments. Anybody have anything?
Not today.
Seeing none, we will move on to number nine, public hearing. The purpose of the public hearing is to receive public comments regarding zoning ordinance text amendments to update Article Two, definition, section three point five, schedule of uses, add section five point three nine renewable energy facilities, and to delete section six point two five wind energy systems for the purpose of complying with the provisions of Public Act two three three of 2023. So we will hear from Mr. Mateo.
Good evening, Mateo. Oh, man. Stuff works good. Good evening, Mateo Poslak, O'Carroll Wardman Associates Township Planner. Yeah, so tonight, what you have in front of you is the draft amendments to the existing zoning ordinance to accommodate renewable energy facilities. So this is something that, you know, as we discussed at the last meeting, that the ORC has been working on, and we've got it to the point where we're putting from the Planning Commission for any kind of last minute questions, comments, reviews. The action that we would be looking to take tonight is to, if you are inclined to, make a recommendation of approval to the Township Board to adopt these amendments, the zoning ordinance. If you have questions, if you have concerns, if you have further edits, there is a little bit more time to kind of take this back to ORC and CWA and have us work on it further. The only dates to kind of keep in mind when it comes to this is that November of this year, Public Act two three three becomes effective, and if communities do not have a compatible renewable energy ordinance in place, it puts them at a high risk for losing site control for large systems to the state. So I'd be happy to go over any other information, entertain any questions or comments regarding it. Otherwise, again, the Planning Commission can take action to recommend approval. Approval with conditions, denial to the Township Board, goes to Township Board for two readings, and then they make their decision from there.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to open the public hearing up at seven oh four.
I have a motion. I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. The public hearing is open at seven oh five PM. Do we have any? Anybody that's wishing to address the Commission, you'll be given three minutes. Comments will be directed toward the Chair. It is not a back and forth dialogue. We're just here to hear what you have to say. So if anybody would like to speak on that, now is the time. Come up to the podium, please state your name and address, and you can give them three minutes.
Hello, my name is Mr. the Commissioner. My name is Ken Gross. I represent Oxford Hills Golf Course. Let me know the address. If you need my address, three oh one five oh Telegraph, three four 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 Bingham Farms. I really only had one point to make is that in the updated master plan materials, there's reference to-
Can I make a point of order? Is this in regards to this public hearing, the ordinance?
That I wasn't clear whether-
This is strictly about this ordinance?
Not at all to the update on the master plan.
No.
It's further down the-
That's further down.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. Make sure you don't want to talk about renewable energy?
I'm all in favor of the renewable-
Okay.
You're no judge.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing at seven oh six PM.
I'll second. I have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. The public hearing is closed at seven oh seven PM. We will move on to comments from the Township Consultants and staff, which I think we've pretty much got everything we need. Does anybody have any questions or clarifications or discussions they need answers to?
Mr. Chair, just to clarify, oh, sorry, this is loud. Just to clarify, so wind energy is removed from this altogether?
Well, no. So you, so kind of the process is that when you start to write new language kind of of this substantial nature, you kind of get the language where you want it, and then you go through your existing margins to see where conflicts or contradictions exist with your old language. So you have some old dated wind energy conversion system language in your ordinance, but it's very vague. It doesn't conform to Public Act two thirty-three. So this new language will take care of wind on that level, so we're going to delete your old wind language. That's the deletion that you see in the proposed language.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to seven, Commissioner's Discussions. What are you thinking? I know that we've talked about this at great lengths at the ordinance review.
Oh, no, I was turning over the mic so I didn't call-
Okay. Go ahead, sir.
Just a point, because reading through this, it seems pretty generic, just more of a definition upgrade or modification, making some of the small changes to wind energy and some of the things we put in the past. So it's almost, it's not a lot of changes to ordinance, just more definitions, because there's not a lot of new information that we put in there other than the definitions.
Well, you have, you basically have it set up in two different ways. You have a section that adheres to the state requirements, which has the thresholds for the big systems. But then what we're also working with communities is shoring up all the language for the systems that are below that threshold, because the state doesn't prescribe what you can and can't do. It's up to you.
Right.
So the bulk of what you're seeing in red is more or less to those smaller local systems that could be proposed, and there is a lot of language under regarding information required at site plan, setbacks, studies that can be required. There is some discretion from the Planning Commission to waive them if they need to. But I would say that, I would say it's a substantial addition to your renewable energy language. And I think that's one because a lot of, you know, solar panels came about as rooftop accessory systems, not as massive six hundred acre fields. But now that the conversation's gotten to that point, it's worth noting kind of these additional steps or requirements in place. Is that kind of answer? Maybe I didn't answer your question.
Maybe. Because when I read through it, I mean, most of the changes were done in the definition area. There's a lot of things farther down that were just struck out. It's like, what you don't do there. But if you go farther down, there's very minor changes throughout that I saw, unless there was things you weren't highlighting in red.
I was going to say, I think what you are more or less, so what you see in red is as it relates to what is coming, primarily what is coming out of your ordinance, but a lot of the text that is not necessarily red is new language. Section five point three nine is completely new.
Oh, I didn't know that. Okay.
My apologies.
That's interesting. I'd have to read that.
Mr. Chair.
I think one of the things that you need to be aware of is that we designated an area as an overlay where we think these type of facilities should go, and it's basically the gravel pit areas.
Okay.
Whether that's self-evident in the writing or not, I don't know. Sorry, I don't remember, but it should be. All right. That's my bad, because I just focused on the changes now.
No, no, that's fair. That's fair.
The ORC has put a tremendous amount of work in this to make it agree with the state as well as agree with what we think, the ORC felt was tolerable within the township. And when I say tolerable within the township, we gave them a designated area to put the solar system in, whether it's solar or wind or the battery storage facilities. And we think we have a good plan. We've gone down to the degree of security fences for those to protect the residents as well as the general public. So in the event that one of those farms and all practical purposes were put in, wanted to be put in place here in the township, within the township, we feel that we can accommodate them, accommodate the state, and make it a doable item within the community. And we have included the fire marshal in our discussions as we wrote this to make sure they were comfortable with what we were putting in, and that they would be able to cover any instance of fire or whatever that needed to be taken care of. Which may include some additional training for them if this occurs.
And not just fire emergency, medical and other situations?
Right.
Any more discussion, questions, clarifications?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a recommendation that we, recommendation for approval to adopt this at the board level, forward this on to the board level as presented.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second that.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. You can abstain.
If you want to read it all properly.
You can't abstain.
I can or can't?
You can't.
You can't abstain. Okay, moving on to number ten, unfinished business, master plan update.
All right, so for master plan information tonight, we're really just looking at the, there were some minor edits from vision goals, objectives, that we wanted to put in front of you guys, as well as taking a look at the final future land use designations to make sure that we can start to finalize those here in the coming weeks. So not heavy lifts. So for tonight, we can start with the vision goals and objectives from the last meeting. The first minor edit falls under community character, objective number five. We added language in there to reference that we would use current zoning standards, not just zoning standards, but to be very specific about we're using whatever is current at the time to make these decisions. And then the other, the other minor edit came from the transportation section, objective five, where we write with the road commission, work with the road commission of Oakland County as well as other agencies to identify transportation improvements and potential funding partnerships for implementation. Again, just kind of casting the net a little bit wider.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. And that was going to be one of my questions, because I just don't think everybody here is aware, but there's discussions at the county level of moving the road commission of Oakland County into actually overall county, so it will be under the administration of the board commission. The answer that happened here is probably eighty to ninety percent. So I don't know if you wanted to use that exact order in here, because it could be outdated in less than three months.
Could you state that again?
The current road commission of Oakland County is a separate entity today.
Right.
There's a high potential it's going to be moved under the umbrella of the overall county, because it's not today. It has its own board, it has everything else. And I would expect the name slightly changed if that happens. So you might want to be maybe a little more generic in that, versus put the road commission of all county.
Work with the road commission of Oakland County.
Yeah.
Work with the county.
Boom. There we go. Something along those lines.
And you seem to think there's a high likelihood of that happening?
Eighty, ninety percent.
So we will go with work with Oakland County as well as other agencies.
Okay, thank you.
Those are literally from the last meeting. I don't know if anyone had any questions, comments about vision goals and statements. This would be, so kind of from this evening, now again, we will compile a final draft with everything and for you guys to look at, but we are looking to start finalizing these sections. So this would, this as it's stated now, with the exception of this minor edit from Commissioner Spiz, would get finalized and incorporated in the overall draft that we're working on.
And then I had talked to Megan earlier about a possible workshop for August. I know there were some things that she was working on for this month, but it's not going to happen, and she was talking about having a workshop beginning of August.
Yeah, I know that we're, I guess what we're trying to time out, and I would say the next big chunk that, as we start to talk about finalization, is the future land use map. I know we're going to talk about designation tonight, but not necessarily placement. But I do believe that Megan and I have, you know, kind of in the works of having August be future land use month, because that is the next step where, that's kind of the next big piece that we have to start to finalize and get into the plan.
Okay.
My only comment, going back to vision goals and objectives. I'm not an English major being an engineer. I'm very bad at English, but reading through some of that, you might want to look at the wording a little bit. There was a couple areas that I was like, didn't necessarily read properly, but I read specs and technical information all day, so to me, it's certainly a stick.
You want me to dry it up a little bit?
No, please don't do that. You don't want to put everybody to sleep when they read this, but there's a couple areas I think might need to tweak.
Okay, no problem. Yeah, if there's no other comments of, yeah, Commissioner.
Is it okay for me to address you directly, Sheriff, through the chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to make sure I'm proper here, and I'm adjusting to the mic, so bear with me here.
No worries.
You know, the discussion we had briefly before the meeting about strategies under each objective, is that something that's going to be rolled into this future? Because I see the language in there, and, you know, as I talk to other commissioners, the language within those strategies under each objective from the 2019 master plan gives us good language to lean on when making decisions. And I'm afraid that if we just use the objective as sort of the high-level bullet point and leave strategies out under each objective, that it gives us less good information to lean on during decision-making.
Yeah, and I know, so for us, I'll need to go back and check with, kind of go through the notes, because like I said, the formatting of this, formatting was kind of the first thing that we looked at, and that may have been just prior to coming out of the PC now. My apologies, because off the top of my head, I cannot remember why those were removed, but I believe the conversation kind of walked the line between, is it, are we too specific or do we leave it general enough for wiggle room? And that's kind of the, that's a broad theme across all master plan sections, but I can take a look back and see, at this point, if they're not in there, then at some point in time, there was a decision made to not go with that formatting style, or objectives of them broken down into strategies. But I can take a look back to see, you know, what was the criteria used to make that decision?
As I, I guess sharing with my fellow commissioners here that potentially, we may want to have specific strategies under each objective, like they had from the 2019 master plan, and those strategies could be part of the results from the survey that came through from the public. There's very specific wording here in strategies from 2019 that must have been created back then by those that put this together, and I think it helped guide them, and I read, there's very specific things which are compelling. And I think it's worth it for us to look at those and maybe consider having strategies under, at least one or two strategies under each objective, or make a decision just to completely remove them. And again, if I'm newer to this, and maybe that was a decision was made to eliminate, but I would ask that in some cases, maybe we consider having those strategies put back.
I have to, oh, sorry.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a suggestion. Can you put together a scenario that talks about the 19 master plan and today's master plan, and have a before and after, so what it is, what you're presenting today, and then integrate some of those objectives from the 19 and fold it in, and let us at the next meeting make up our mind if we'd like to see that or not, like a to and from?
Before and after.
Before and after.
Yes, yeah, I can, we can look into that. I think the, I think the challenge with part of this is, is that a lot of, not all of this is carryover. I mean, it's not necessarily word-for-word carryover. Some of it is, but not all of it, but the tweaks have been, to some extent, minor, maybe some major ones here or there.
You got a commissioner that feels very passionate about that.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not-
Why don't we just go ahead and do it and talk about it next meeting? Because I'm not versed enough to carry on a conversation on it. I don't have the 19 in front of me to verify what some of those bullet points are, and I don't think it's fair to the other commissioners for me to go off and do that right now.
That's fair.
Okay.
And if you like-
I'm not trying to shut you down. I'm just-
Oh, no, no.
You know, we got to move it forward on timeline, understand that, but this is something that's pretty critical.
Okay. Yeah, we can get over that. We'll have some sort of a synopsis for you at the next meeting. All right, let me work with, let me work with Megan, and I'll report back one way or the other.
Thank you.
Sure.
You have more?
He has another.
You have more? Or you finished?
Go ahead.
Just looking through this, and maybe it's just the way it's formatted, under transportation, is there two goals intended under transportation? Because everything else has one goal. Transportation seems to have two, but the way the pages are broken, at least in my packet, it's a little bit, can be a little bit, just put out on the next page, so you'll see. There's another goal at the top of there.
I believe it's intentional that there's two goals, and maybe it is just, it's just an anomaly for transportation-
Maybe it's the way it's printed on here, too. It just, it just kind of caught me off guard, and I didn't know if I expected the title.
I will double check.
Because nothing else had two. What kind of stood out is an anomaly. Are we also discussing the future land use page now or later?
As far as the designations?
Whatever you have in the packet.
That's kind of the next topic on the agenda.
Unless you're ready for it, huh?
I mean, for vision goals, objectives, what I have as a takeaway is some minor tweaks.
Yeah.
Kind of a look into the 19 formatting, language, strategies, things of that nature, against what we're proposing for 24. And then I'll take a look at the second goal for transportation, if it's a formatting issue or if it's intentional.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good?
Yeah.
All right, the next, the next section that we wanted to take a look at were the future land use designations. So these, while redlined, the only new red lines is in parentheses next to the designations, we've added the lot sizes and/or where necessary, a generic use statement, just so it's a little bit easier to identify.
Excuse me.
Again, the designations that have been selected on the map as it relates to the lot size and early use. All the other red lines are existing from prior conversations. This is another section where we want to get to kind of the finalization standpoint to start putting in the overall final draft. So we wanted to solicit any other comments, questions, concerns as it relates to these designations.
I'd just like to offer, Mr. Chair, I appreciate the square footage with the lot sizes put next to those, because I sometimes have a bad memory on some of those things, and I appreciate that.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just going through, it's more formatting, I think, because if you could, when you go from what was hunt country agriculture to equine country agriculture, you go to the next section, it says hunt country estates, which I think you intend to change that, because in some of the red lines, and you can see it there, you have some of the hunt crossed out as the equine, but you don't have it all. It's in multiple phases, or it switches back and forth between hunt and equine. So I don't know, is the intent to change anything that had the word hunt in it to equine?
Well, so, and I can read through it. Some of what is referenced in hunt, equine, makes a refer, or I'm sorry, in hunt country, it makes a reference to equine?
Mm-hmm.
So is that, you know?
Just going back and forth might be confusing. So I'm wondering the intent, all right? The first one we changed, the first one we changed everything, it looked like, from hunt to equine. The second one still says hunt country estates, and it's just the difference is the acreage size went from twenty to ten, but the terminology flips back and forth in the second one.
So kind of like where it says, you know, similar, in a similar manner to the equine, just get rid of those statements altogether?
Yeah.
It is what it is.
If we're going to keep it hunt, it's going to stay hunt. That's just a little confusing to me. Maybe I'm overanalyzing. I don't need to be.
No, you're good.
Were there any other questions, concerns, comments about the designations? Again, we went from 21 to 18, and most of the consolidation was over the different and the various industrial research office, commercial uses. Multifamily originally had kind of two sub-designations. We still, we still kind of retain that within multifamily, outlined as single-family attached or multifamily residential, single-family attached being, you know, attached condos, duplexes, triplexes, things like that, multifamily being more akin to apartments around the building.
Just another simple question, maybe I missed it in past. I, going from memory, I thought we were getting rid of anything that had village residential in it, and I still see we have a section that says village residential. All the other ones that had the word village in, we removed farther down. And maybe I misunderstood past conversations?
I know we made, I know that we removed references to the village, but the title of village residential was retained, I think, just to kind of emulate the denser, smaller lots that-
And I can respect that. Just example, we had village commercial, changed to suburban commercial. Village mixed use, we changed to contemporary mixed use, so it's like-
We, I mean, if it's, if it aids in being confusing, I mean, we can rename-
I don't think it's confusing, not for me. I don't think it'd be confusing for anybody. I'm just from a, what does everybody else call that type of zone out there? Do they call it village? I mean, it's probably a hundred different ones, right?
Yeah. I think, I mean, yours is just characteristic of the village of Oxford, you know, it's-
Understood.
That style.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Under public institutional, I noticed you drew a line through churches. Were they not part of that zoning area?
I think that may have been in an effort to, while it was either deleted or it would have been with the intent of replacing with places of worship, it's kind of this effort to generalize-
Everything.
Everything. I can look into whether or not that was deleted completely based off some substantial reason or-
Or some other wording.
Because it would have to be covered somewhere.
Yeah.
Right, in one of the other areas, if it's been removed from there.
I don't think it has.
I think if you look at the institutional zoning ordinance-
That is where you have them.
It includes, includes places of worship.
Okay. That may have been the intent of the deletion of churches. I'll look into it.
Mr. Chair, I have one question.
Go ahead.
You know, defining the square footage, I agree, is a good idea. We have a minimum law- We have a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet.
By zoning.
By zoning. Is that, so that's not included in this definition or?
No.
Help me understand where that language is.
Well, it's not, it's not, so we identify in the future land use map a minimum lot size of 9,000 square feet.
Okay.
And I have to, I wish I had it up here, but I don't think your, your current future land use map does either. I don't think the 2019 map has 6,000 square foot to 9,000 square foot designated. And again, I think as we've had these conversations, it seemed as though 9,000 square foot lots was the minimum lot size that, you know, the planning commission wanted to see as we start to work towards finalizing this master plan, and then, of course, the zoning regrets that come after it. Any zoning updates that came after the fact wouldn't necessarily eliminate. Well, it wouldn't, it wouldn't make the R-1A that we have now nonconforming, it's just kind of saving precedent that we're starting to work our way towards wanting the 9,000 square foot minimum.
Larger lots.
I'm sorry.
Larger lots.
Correct, not a 6,000 square foot minimum.
Okay. So when a conventional plan is presented in a preliminary site plan review, and they show the conventional plan that could, that's based on 6,000, that would be no longer?
Unless it existed in an R-1A district.
Okay. Okay.
You're essentially setting yourself up to see you're moving forward, you do not plan to utilize R-1A any further.
Okay. Thank you.
General question. As we go through, can you complete the master plan in your process?
They're not picking you up on the.
Turn the mic on, bud.
Good.
You need to pull it closer. If you, if you guys can hear how Mateo's voice is on the mics, all your voices should be like that when you're talking on the mic. Because when, when I try to listen back, half of you I won't not be able to hear if you're not using the mic. So you're not, you're not talking to each other, you're not just talking to Mateo. You need to speak so that everybody out there can hear you. Because otherwise, it's just a mumble fest.
You got to start a whole meeting over.
Okay. My question has to do with the fact that the master plan, when completed and approved, may conflict with existing zoning ordinances that we have.
It can, yes.
Okay. Is that going to be the next overall step to go back and compare the master plan and update zoning where it needs to be?
Yeah. So the, the master plan is going to help inform your decisions to rewrite or amend your zoning ordinance moving forward after it's adopted. And so it could substantiate the decision to say, you know, we want, we want these types of lot sizes, or we're going to, you know, incorporate this new type of zoning, or modify our current zoning to have this.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Sure.
So in our work here as a township, it would go back to the ORC after you evaluated it to see if we needed to change the ordinances?
Correct. The ORC would start to kind of develop a priority list as it has, and start to kind of pick the things that the master plan calls out, and start to use that as a basis for making zoning amendment recommendations.
Okay.
Any more questions?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to call a point of order.
I'm sorry.
Hey.
I just have one more point, John.
Oh, go ahead.
Am I interrupting?
No, no, go ahead.
So Commissioner Knoll made a point about comparing 2019 to what's currently in front of us, and that we might discuss that at the next meeting. That seems like a daunting task. It's a lot of information to compare side by side. I'm just wondering if there's any thoughts on how we might work through that in a meeting or.
I think he was referring to vision goals and objectives.
Correct.
Not the entire master plan.
Oh, well, true, though, even though looking at all the strategies that are currently in the 19 compared to what I saw in the draft that's been presented, there's no strategies in the draft. But there's under each, in the 19, there's several strategies under each objective. That would be a lot to compare and work through in a meeting, I believe. And I don't know if that might be something that the steering committee for the master plan should help with. I'm, I'm looking for some advice or some suggestions on how we might work through that inefficiently.
Mr. Chair, let me take a stab at that. The steering committee has served its purpose, and it's dormant out there. We're not exercising any more work out of them. As far as comparing these side by side, that's what I do when I prepare for this meeting, is I look at the 19, I even have a 16 or the one before that master plan. I try to draw correlations of a like thinking between the two older ones and the one that we're working on today. And I do that, and then some of those comments that I bring to this, this meeting are based on some of those, the analysis I've done at home, thinking about, well, how is this going to apply today? What were they thinking about back then, even though I was one of them? And then moving forward. And that's kind of the way I envision this, this next meeting to happen, is when you do your little bit of analysis on those.
Vision goals and objectives.
Goals and objectives, that's what we'll be looking at.
Yeah.
And one thing we've tried to stay away from is anything that looked like the old one, from wording, from format. The board, the trustee board did everything they could to guide this into a totally new master plan, and we upped the fee for Carlisle-Wartman to do that. And I think that's what the board will be looking for, that I look for, is a new master plan that's not, that's taking the old information, applying it to today, and adding the new information that we know about.
Are you referencing, as far as the master plan project scope, are you referring to the one that was originally approved last year? Or is it, or are you referring to more recent conversations?
No, this is what, what you're working to is the approval that the board did when they signed on with you to move forward with the master plan.
Last year?
Yes.
Yes, okay, all right. Just as a point of clarification, and while I agree, it is a substantial update, it's not a rewrite.
Correct.
Yeah, so I think, I mean, what I'd like to do is, again, I'm cutting my teeth in certain ways, but I want to confirm with my superiors about what's the best way to address the concerns about the vision goals, objectives, and strategies? And then kind of present that to you as what's the best way to move forward in comparing the two and working through that.
And I think that's where I talked to Megan about the workshop at the next one, where, you know, like John had said, you know, do some homework and have those questions, you know, kind of prepare forward ahead of time.
No, I don't disagree. I mean, I, like I said, I think it's, yeah, it's just looking at the timeline out and trying to kind of figure out what sections are we really trying to work towards so that we've got a substantial draft in your hand, you know, at the latest I fall. And again, with the future land use map itself, that will be left. But again, let me, let me circle back with, let me circle back with my superiors and we'll be in touch.
Good. Any more questions?
If it's all said, I'd like to point of order.
Okay.
Susan, we, we have a gentleman that wanted to speak in regards to the master plan. How do we incorporate that into our agenda tonight?
You can allow comments from the public.
Okay. I wasn't sure if we had to do that or circle back to number seven, and, because that's actually where that should have happened. But yeah, we can do that.
Well, unless it, number seven, but I think his comment has to do with this.
It does.
So, yeah, you can allow.
Okay. Okay, you good?
Okay.
Yeah, no, we're good. Okay, so we will do that. You wanted to talk, I mean, the same rules apply, three minutes to address the.
Probably less than one minute. It's really, I realize this is not an opportunity for dialogue. Ken Gross, representing Oxford Hills Golf Course. I just read the materials with regard to the plan, and I did note that it provided in there that with regard to the small plant, small area plans, that there's a plan to meet with the property owners during the month of July. I was just kind of looking for an opportunity to inquire as to when should we expect to hear from someone, it being now getting close to mid-July, so that we have that opportunity. If it, if it carries into August, so be it. I just wanted to make, the last meeting that I attended where we talked about the small plans, the commission approved three small area plans, of which Oxford Golf Course was one of them. I'm assuming that's still the case, so I'm assuming that there will be some reach out to Ms. Hubbard or myself as the representative in order to engage in that conversation. And I was really just looking for an opportunity to inquire on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, real quick.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just offer a point of clarification. Nothing, nothing that you've stated is, is in error from the perspective of, there are a lot of conversations about the sub-area plans. The planning commission has discussed the different areas in which a sub-area plan might be useful. Oxford Hills was named as one of them. It has not been finalized as a small area plan site, though. I just wanted to.
Finish it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so we will move on to number 11, new business. A preliminary site plan, PC 24002, Enclaves of Woodbridge, Phase 3, parcel number 042220025, located on the south side of East Market Street, east of North Lapeer Road. Applicant, Enclaves of Woodbridge LLC, 51410, Milano Drive, Suite 115, Macomb, Michigan, 48042. Applicant is proposing nine new buildings consisting of seven duplexes and two triplex buildings. This phase of the condominium development will consist of a total of 20 units. So we will start off with a presentation by the petitioner.
Well, good evening, Mr. Chairman and planning commissioners. My name is Daniel Spatafora, and I am with Enclaves of Woodbridge LLC, the address being on the agenda. And we are pleased to present this third and final phase of Enclaves of Woodbridge. When all is said and done, we hope to have 74 total units. This is for a preliminary site plan for your consideration review. We originally filed the application, I believe it was in early May. We did receive some good constructive comments from the departments. We went ahead and made some revisions, and we resubmitted to be in a position for consideration tonight. To the best of our knowledge, the departments, planning, engineering, and the fire department have no objections to or are recommending approval for the preliminary site plan. It meets all the requirements. For that, we understand for the final site plan approval will be a little bit more details that will be involved. One of the items that I'd like to address that the planning, the planner had indicated was reference to the lighting for Phase 3. We intended to be the same as Phases 1 and 2, the same type of reflection on that. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any further questions.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to open the.
No, there's not public here.
No, there's not public here. Never mind.
No, just, just discussion.
Okay. Any questions or topics?
Go ahead. My question's, first question, I was going to start off on roads. Out of Phase 1, 2, and 3, which ones are county roads or tantric roads? Which ones are private roads?
Market Street is a private road as well as Cornerstone Drive, the South of Market Street, and the private road that goes north, it's Brookstone.
I thought Market Street was public up to a cer, was only public up to a certain point?
I think through that area, I think it was designated private pursuant to a previous agreement that was recorded, my knowledge.
I'd like to, I'd like to confirm that, because I'm kind of surprised because there's really no homes on Market Street. They're all off. Until you get to the apartment at the very end.
And that leads, I think, the apartment complex, Mr. Spiz, through the chair, was, I think, responsible, they were a party to that earlier agreement.
All right, we'll, we'll confirm that. Thank you.
Any questions?
I'm going on memory on this because we've run, this is the third of the, of the three phases. Your blueprints, your drawings, your sizes of footprints of the home or mirror images of Phase 1 and 2, is that correct?
We will continue, Mr. Knoll, with the same type of pattern. We'll have seven duplex buildings as indicated, and then we're also introducing three triplex buildings. But the elevations, the styles, the colors, they'll all be the same and continue in a really nice pattern, real nice homes that are right next to the golf course.
Looking over your drawings, looking over the plan drawing, it shows all your driveways coming into front-facing garages.
That's correct.
When I look at some of the details in the drawing, there's at least one that shows a side entry garage. And I am asking that you remove that from your plan.
Would that be the architectural plan, the landscaping plan, or was it the civil engineering site?
It's page 2 of the planning interior design.
I think it's one of your floor plans.
It's one of the floor.
That's an architect. I will make sure that that will be corrected and taken care of, certainly by the time of the final site plan.
Right.
Because they are all intended, Mr. Turner, for front and garages, that's correct.
I get, just a question, why are you asking for that specifically?
Well, if you, if you look at the total area, it doesn't look like there's room enough between two of the buildings to do a side entrance and meet the requirements for driveways, number one.
If I could add, I don't think anywhere in Phase 3 it shows any side entry.
No.
Phase 2 had a couple, I think, if I'm looking at this correctly. So they probably copy pasted something.
Yeah.
That's my guess.
Unit A4 on your drawings is a little bit suspicious.
Page 55.
A4?
A4.
Well, this is sheet number 2 that I'm looking at. And sheet number, sheet number 3 shows the front entries.
I see what you're talking about now.
We will correct that for Phase 3, so as not to confuse for that, but they're all intended to be front entry garages for Phase 3.
Thank you. I'm not sure I gave you the right page.
Hmm?
Thank you. I'm not sure I gave you the right page. So if you, if you stand corrected, that'd be great.
It's sheet number 2 of the group that I'm looking at.
So one that's on the screen right now?
Yes.
I mean, there's, there are models and or references to floor plans that do indicate side entry garages. So I think it's, I think it's just that any floor plan or no indicating side entry garage would be removed for all.
It was in your write-up. I saw that. But I wanted to make sure that the drawings get corrected.
Yeah, I mean, we can.
Because otherwise, I'm going to want to go and buy one of those with a side entry.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can note that at final, we can.
And if we don't make the setback requirements, we probably won't get, so.
It's a pretty thing, unapproved.
We will make sure that's corrected before the final site plan consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice hand.
Mr. Chair, just a little. Mr. Chair, just had a comment for a moment. The lighting was the, CWA pointed out the lighting, and I, I think one of our strategies is try to minimize, or to have dark skies is one of our strategies. But I see that the same lighting was approved in the previous phases. So it makes sense to continue that. And it makes, seems to make sense based on the location within the township, that that type of lighting would, would work in that area compared to, say, going into a more rural area and putting street lighting in. So I just wanted to make a comment that I think as we consider lighting changes like that, we look at the location. But in this case, I think it works really well, consistent with what, Phases 1 and 2.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion?
Can you make a motion? Just wants more from Mateo. Since we've been talking master plan and, and transportation's perspective and strategies, one of the things I know we've talked about in the past is trying to find a way, east to west or west to east, to get a road to go through there? And Market Street was one of the ones we've talked about for years. So do we have that anywhere in the master plan draft today?
The transport, so the transportation section that will reference, should I step up there, Susan?
That mic's on.
Is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can hear you.
You've no surf.
Oh, okay, it is on, all right.
In the transportation section for the master plan draft, we are talking about additional routes, east, west, north, south for the community. So I believe eastern, east market is indicated as a corridor that we'd be looking at to find a way to connect to Oxford Road.
Okay, reason I bring that up, because if you go to the end unit, that becomes a problem. If we could decide to try to wind go there, because once you build that unit, you're not gonna put a load in there.
So all with the apartments to the east, next to the high school, we were looking at. Can you hear me? I'm sorry.
I can hear you.
Okay.
With that end unit, they won't be able to drive that over.
No, we were looking, I believe it was designated at Cornerstone Drive to do a full looping circle going to the south and back to the north, right next to the apartments on that piece to the adjacent, east to us, back up to Market Street to have better circulation. We weren't successful in working with BKG Oxford that owns the apartments, and they decided to hold on to it, so that's why we ended it at Phase 3 at the end there.
I gotcha. I mean, I know, we're going way back when, when we first talked about this project, right? Ten years ago. Developer for the apartments, but they owned all of that, including the piece of property that went all the way back. And it's, plan was always to push a road through there. And then they sold the piece off to the school.
Why you hitting me? I'm not on this.
It used to be. And, and it kind of shot a hole in that whole strategy back then. So I'm just, if it's part of the master plan, we have to take out of master plan, because if you build that end unit, there's no way in hell we're ever putting that road through there.
I don't think, I mean, I, I get what you're saying. I, I wouldn't necessarily say we have to take it out of the master plan as a consideration. I, this development might change the way in which we look and how that's going to work, and might force more of a conversation with the school board about trying to figure out something through that area. But I still think the corridor could be identified in the master plan.
This topic, Mr. Chair, this topic wasn't discussed during the pre-act meeting?
Not that I recall.
To the best of, I was, Mr. Nold, at the pre-act meeting, and to the best of my knowledge, that was not brought up as far as the circulation of the roads. Obviously, a very, myself being a planning commissioner in another community, you know, obviously, traffic circulation and that is very, very important. But no, that wasn't discussed. And to the best of my knowledge, Mr. Spiz is correct where, you know, for, for years, that was designated as a private road. Perhaps they planned on having, you know, circulation and through to dedicate it perhaps as a public road, but to the best of our knowledge, right now, we planned and developed this, you know, it's a nice private, you know, exclusive residential multifamily community with very nice homes there.
Don't get, don't get my comments wrong, you know, I, I, we need multifamily in the area. Just ordered all the other phases, it's just, we're thinking ahead to what we're trying to do.
Sure.
Looking at this plan, that end unit throws a curveball and everything, in my opinion.
You don't own that property?
I mean, we understand, and I'm not asking that you extend the road. I'm looking, because you own all the, own all the properties to the end anyway. So, but we'd have to think of another strategic plan to make that happen.
It's, just, are you, just to be clear, are you referring to unit number 31?
32, I think it was.
It's identified better on sheets further up.
32.
32.
Oh, your thought being that the, that private road, the cornerstone, would, would continue through the development and over to Oxford, all the way?
There'd be a lot of traffic on that road.
Yeah, I know. And I may not know for the reasons, but I'm just thinking, master plan, timing together.
I mean, I, topography would be a huge part of the conversation, but there may be enough.
Which is why they sold that piece of property off, because topography was always an issue.
Well, my point being is that if Market were to continue, if we were to take a hard south and wrap around the school and cut basically between their development and the school, that might still be possible, but again, the topography in that area would be one to work around.
Yeah, you could always take out the football field and move it south.
Go on, yeah. That's fine, I'm gonna give Jim such a hard time for not to hear.
Mr. Chair, I think we're getting off track.
We are, just, I'm gonna bring it up.
Yes, we are.
Because it's, it's, it's something we've been talking, or at least I've been talking about for a while.
Are there any other questions or topics on this?
One item I would like to make up, just as a point of correction. You had stated three triplex buildings, you have two triplex buildings.
I stand corrected, it's two triplex buildings, 20 units, seven duplexes, and two three-unit homes.
Correct. Okay, any more questions, concerns?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion?
Okay.
I move to grant preliminary site plan approval for PC file number PC-24002, known as the project name in Phase 3 of the Enclaves of Woodbridge project, condition upon the following being completed by the applicant. Number 1, applicant providing the information required by the township zoning ordinance as set forth in the reports submitted by the township consultant, the township fire department, and the township administration. And 2, applicant submitting revised plans addressing state deficiencies in reports submitted by the township consultants, the township fire department, and the township administration.
Okay, we have a motion?
Okay.
You can all make it. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion or questions on that? Can we get a roll call vote?
Sure. Spiz?
No.
Ballard?
Yes.
Losa?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Nold?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a comment. I think we had a good dialogue going on with the road situation. We're all looking for roads to be, that help ease the traffic and the flow in this area. I like the idea of, the idea of Market Street being extended on the north, the east side, and possibly through the back part of the high school property. I think we could look into that, or that should be looked into. But I appreciate the, the forward thinking on these things.
Mr. Chair, I, please, don't get my vote wrong. I, I always push for this road to go through there because I think it's important for our future development in the township. But I also love this development in general, you know, it's for development phases, including departments, because I know we need this, these type of units here. So it's not against you, it's more of I'm thinking for future planning purposes. And it's just that one unit, basically.
Okay, well, thank you.
Well, thank you.
All right, moving on to number 12, communication committee reports. Economic Development Committee?
No report.
Nothing to report. The ordinance review committee, and I will first start off with apologies for missing the meeting today due to work circumstances, but I hear you guys had a productive meeting.
We did. Is your absence something we're gonna see in the future, or are you?
No, it was just first week.
Okay. Well, I understand, you got a new job, you gotta impress a new boss.
That's right.
Get it, Mr. Turner.
We did spend our time working on two items. We're starting to develop an ordinance for electric vehicle charging systems and their locations. And then the other one had to do with requests for zoning changes. If, and there's two, two type of things. One is to the zoning map, and the other is to the ordinance itself. And so we're, we went through the first part of the process, and now we're going to make some changes to what was written up, and we're also gonna try to develop a flow chart of how this works that we can give to the building department to start that, and how it goes on through the organization. And so we will do some more work on that next month at our August 8th meeting.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Moving on to 13, planner and engineering reports.
Nothing, nothing substantial from planning. We're, we've been working with Tim London to try to streamline and get a little bit more efficiency out of the processes that we have for doing reviews and inspections and things of that nature. But that's pretty much on a day-to-day basis.
Thank you. And the information from Sharp Engineering was in our packet, so if there's any questions, we can bring that up individually to Mr. Sharp. With that, I will take a motion for adjournment.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion, but we adjourn.
Second.
012.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned, 8:02.